We have a city council meeting. Reschedule of May 15th, 2018 will now come to order. Road call.
Councilor Hoag.
Here.
Councilor Koyvenen.
Here.
Councilor Lillis.
Here.
Councilor Hadrava.
Here.
Mayor Visalovich.
Here.
Minutes of city council meeting, April 24th. If no one has any questions or additions, call for a motion that we approve these minutes. So moved. Motion made by Koyvenen, do I have a support?
Support.
Worked by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Item D, approval of tonight's agenda. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
I have just that handout.
Yeah. Is this an addition or just information?
No, it's an addition.
Okay, that'll be number 14. Oh, that's for the security camera.
Yes.
Okay. Oh yeah, that's, you're really in bad shape.
I can't, I can't do it left-handed.
Add item 14, security cameras, that will be under new business. Anybody else have any additions? Or deletions, if not, call for a motion that we approve tonight's agenda? So moved. Motion made by Hoag, do I have a support? Support. Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Appointments and presentation, commission application from Tony Anderson for the joint recreation board. If no one has any questions, call for a motion that we approve Tony for the rec board. So moved. Motion made by Hoag, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Worked by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Item G, consent agenda, approval of payroll, April 16th through the 30th. Approval of claims, April 2018. Approval to close Wells Fargo safety deposit box and open safety deposit box at the Miners National Bank. Anybody have any questions or changes to the consent agenda?
I got one question, Mayor. It was brought to my attention by somebody. Now, we closed Wells Fargo. And I agree with that. The questions I have is I thought a while back, like quite a few years ago, the auditors made us open an extra account because we couldn't leave all our ducks in one basket. So, with that being said, do we have a plan to open up in a different facility?
We do not, the amount we had in Wells Fargo's was a couple hundred thousand dollars. And the auditor has not ever said that to me. So it must have been a long, long time ago. Um, I don't believe it's any issue, the difficulty is if we were to bank somewhere else, it's rather inconvenient to get there.
I realize that.
Yeah.
I realize that. The question was, was that are we totally above board on one, one thing?
I believe so, yep.
Two-year thinking?
Yes, yes, that's what, that's what was said a few years ago in Rand was our clerk and, and that's why we had to open that account because we only had all our ducks in one row at that time at the Miners National Bank.
Well, and I don't know if the laws have changed, but the bank is collateralizes, buys extra collateral for all of our deposits beyond the FDIC. And that's measured every month and the auditor looks at that. So maybe all those years ago, maybe that mechanism wasn't in place, I'm guessing, but I think we should be fine.
Okay, okay, it was just a question.
Yep.
To, you know, I mean, either way, we're gonna do what we're gonna do and, and I'm on board with that, it was just a question for moving forward.
Yep.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion, Steph? You have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Yep, so moved. Motion made by Hoag, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
No public hearings, no unfinished business. Move on to item J1. Second reading of an ordinance amending the city, city code chapter 5, section 5.41, subdivision, two hours of sales, section 5, 5.4 hours and days of liquor sales. This is our final reading on this?
Yes.
So anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we'll call for a motion that we approve the second reading. So moved. Made by Koyvenen, do I have a support?
Support.
Worked by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Number two, retirement notice from Jeff Pruszek. You know, I, I had kind of mixed feelings about this. Maybe Jeff's a little too young to be going, we should kind of maybe wait till December and look at this again.
You know, 41 years, I think he could go another five more.
Oh, I think we got at least that, or else you gotta find a replacement.
I think we're gonna catch it on this one. As much as I hate to say it, and he's done a darn good job throughout the years, and he's a friend of mine too, so I guess I'll make a motion to accept it.
I'd do it with a, a heavy heart here, you know?
Yes.
All the old ones aren't going here. You're making a motion that we?
I will make a motion that we accept it with a heavy heart.
Do I have a support?
I'll support.
Motion made by Koyvenen, supported by Hadrava, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, the motion carried.
Item three, donations request from Evolent 4th of July Committee. I think they're looking for the same thing they always did, 2,500? Any questions? If not, call for a motion that we approve the donation request from the Evolent 4th of July Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Item number four, announced 2018, 4th of July, Grand Marshall. Loretta Nemnic. Long time, Evolent name there. Loretta's been pretty heavily involved in the community, it's, it's good to see, uh, it's good to see that honor go to her too.
And she still cruises around pretty darn good.
Oh yeah. Oh, you see her, all the functions at the auditorium, the man is there. I, I heard an interesting thing from some of the committee members that they gotta make sure that you wanna accept the honor of that. That's why I made the announcement, I didn't think about that. Nice, I suppose, you know, you gotta get stressed out riding in that parade and everything.
We did the J.C.'s, when the J.C.'s were doing it, Councilor Koyvenen and I, I can honestly tell you that there was many, many, he says, "I'm not old enough."
Oh, really?
I'm not old enough and the old saying is, "I'm not worthy."
And I'm not worthy, and...
Really?
That we have heard that a lot of times, when we were going through our list of phone calls of, of people we thought were elderly. Is that what you're gonna say, Joe?
What's that?
You're not worthy, you're not enough.
You don't have to worry about me getting that old. Well, congratulations, Loretta. Item five, approved plans and specs for Jackson Street, 700 block sanitary sewer, water main and storm sewer improvement project. Anybody have any questions or? Scott, Rod, do you guys have anything to add? We're good to go.
Yes, plans completed, uh, contest looks good. Is this your CBD? The only thing that, you know, advertising for bids now, as soon as we can open is the eighth, which is three days after the next company. We go to the fifth, so we would request that it be a, some kind of special meeting to work that bid, so we don't have to wait, you know, with the interruption of the...
What day were you thinking?
We can open a bid on Friday. So if we had a special meeting following, um, I think we'd go.
The last couple of big projects we've got, uh, weren't quite finished, what we're doing on Nems in the summer.
Been in contact with contractors, but they haven't given us a date when we come back in, but road restrictions are still...
And we're withholding that. Keep that in mind, I suppose, when we go for bids.
The road restriction's still on? Oh, I thought they were all pulled. Anybody have any questions? Not?
Do we wanna set a, a special meeting now or?
Well, we could have, uh, see who's got a jackie in college, you need what, three days, jackie?
Yes.
Beforehand, when you got up there?
I'm, I'm on nights so I can come.
Oh.
I'll just adjust my sleep schedule a little bit.
Cause that ain't gonna take long, and that's gonna be the only item?
Right.
On the agenda, so.
Noon-ish, 1 o'clock-ish is best.
Okay, a call for a motion and, do we have a motion or a second? Motion that we approve the, uh, plans for Jackson Street. So moved. Motion made by Koyvenen, do I have a support?
I'll support it.
Support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number six, call for bids for Jackson Street, 700 block, sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer improvement project. Call for a motions that we call for bids for that project?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Worked by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Rocking and rolling with our infrastructure projects.
Another one.
Yeah. Item number seven, grant agreement from the Evolent Area Community Foundation Fund for security cameras. Do we have to have a resolution for this or how do we accept this just?
So it's a grant and not a, um, donation, a donation would be a resolution. So I think that you should just, um, accept the grant agreement, then we'll sign off on it, the grant agreement detached.
Call for a motion that we accept the grant from the Evolent Foundation for $5,000 for our security camera project? This is a pretty easy one, so moved. Motion made by Koyvenen, have a support?
I'll support it.
Worked by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Item number eight, resolution approving matching contribution for the fire service planning grant. Do you have any anticipated start date on?
No, they've already started.
Oh, they have?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Then we call for a motion that we approve this, uh, matching contribution for this fire service planning grant?
So moved.
Made by Lillis, do I have a support?
Support.
Worked by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Item number nine, St. Louis County Mobile Data Communications Agreement for the ambulance services. Is this something new or just, uh, updated?
No, it's new, so this enables the onboard charting.
Oh, okay.
It's all as part of that package.
Okay, that's, for the new equipment?
Yes.
Oh, good. Call for a motion that we enter into mobile data agreement of St. Louis County?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
I'll, I'll support.
Worked by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Item number 10, approved purchase of new Keocera copier for City Hall. Did you guys get a maintenance agreement with that thing?
Yes, there's a maintenance agreement, and then also we looked at a lease. And the lease after like four years is no different than a purchase.
Okay.
Yep. And we, we worn this one out after 13 plus years, it's just become unreliable.
I can't understand why.
That was my next question, is it worth anything to anybody?
Well, that's what we asked, he says no. So if we have a place to put it where somebody doesn't have deadlines like we do, and can live with if it dies and it takes a day for maintenance, or how about the part never comes in?
Yeah.
Cause after so many years, they don't, no, carry the spare parts anymore, so we're getting, it's getting a little desperate around here.
It's time.
It's time, right Stephanie?
Yeah.
It's time.
It could be an anchor for the fountain.
You know, we could okay this as long as we don't get more papers.
Okay, okay.
Somebody brought up iPads or something a couple of years ago, I don't know.
That'd have been me.
I've seen people with iPad or councils with iPads and they don't have paper.
I'm willing to get you guys iPads.
How do I explain the rabbit ate it?
Ate your iPad.
Or scratched your notes on there.
Yeah.
Call for a motion, after no further discussion, approve the purchase of the new Carosia copier for City Hall?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
All support, these are big.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Item number 11, authorize staff to post for internally and externally if necessary to fill vacancy created by the pending retirement of operator maintenance worker. Anybody have any questions or? You're probably gonna have to post externally too. Call for a motion that we allow staff to post for a vacancy in public works internally and externally, so, which was made by Hoag, do I have support?
I'll support that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Item number 12. Professional services proposal for ar- from Architectural Resources for Evolent Public Library Repair Project, and that is the roof project, I'm thinking.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or anything? I suppose when we get the proposal, we'll have a lot of questions. Call for a motion that we approve this proposal from Architectural Resources?
So need a roof on the library, and I'll start with that motion, I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
Motion made by Hadrava, support by Hoag. Well, this is gonna give us a pretty good idea of what we're dealing with there.
Yeah.
You know, for the next, uh, few years, you can always probably do it in stages. All these old buildings, you know, they all need roofs. When you start air conditioning them and insulating them, that's, that's when the problems start. Any further discussion? Call for a motion that we approve this proposal? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Item number three, 13, resolution approving water rate change?
Well, I'd like to cable this, Mayor, myself. I've got some discussions with, uh, I'd like to have a little quick meeting with our guys before I make the motion to, uh, to pass it. And, uh, I am in favor of it, we need it, it's for our water tank, but I'd like to see some changes on, in that process. I talked to Scott a little bit this morning, just a little while ago about it, when he explained it to me, so, um, I'm a little bit behind, because I wasn't here for the last couple meetings, but I have some suggestions that might make things easier.
Well, I know we've been kicking this thing down the road and...
I know we need to get it by the 25th also, so that's why I would say we should do this next little thing in a hurry. Once we make our motion and do it, we're bound by what we're gonna do and we can't change it, so.
What, what is your concern with that?
Well, my concern is, is that we do our $5, we need to do that, I understand that. My other concern is that not all of our customers at this time will get this $5, is that right, Scott?
No, I think the rate increases for all of our customers.
Yeah. Let go south on all of our customers?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, we're up for renegotiation on that agreement, and that was set to expire in May, so I think we were filled in at the last meeting that we were going to?
Okay.
Make this across the board for all users.
That's, that's what I'm in favor of, that's why I was...
Well, you know, there's something...
A little bit behind, Paul, hearing a question.
If something happened, you can always amend it to, you know, down the road.
Yeah.
I wanna pair for everybody, that's all.
I think, no, ever, that's it, everybody gets the same.
Right.
I think, Mayor, for the sake of the public, you know, since this is such a, a sensitive issue, and I don't take it lightly either, than raising or increasing any of our rates whatsoever, but I think we're kind of in a position where we're backed into a corner again this year. Last year, we were stuck with the West Evolent Water Tower repair. This year, we're stuck with an even more expensive project with the main water tower. So we just, you know, we're continuing to operate in the red in that particular fund. So we need to, you know, not only from a business perspective, catch up, but I think there, the people that are giving us our money for the low interest loan are making some requirements on us, are they not?
This is what this is, is that's their requirement.
So, you know, the public has to understand that we all don't take this lightly in the least, we definitely would not raise rates unless it was something that we, we had to do, but we're in a position now where we need to take this action and, and furthermore, we'll also have to review what we've got going on with other rates and come up with some decisions in the near future on that, but, um, currently the, the service fee that we're contemplating and acting is something that we're, um, pretty much bound to do at this point, both financially and because we have to get, we have to satisfy the loan requirements.
And so people know too, you know, that, you know, we wanna be as transparent as possible, cause this is their community, this is their water tower, whatever, but the water tower is a one, 1.25 million dollar renovation. And we can't do that out of city coffers. So it's gotta be like, Councilor Lillis said, it's gotta be with the loan, but you have to be, you have to make, it's gotta be feasible to get the loan, so we have to increase the rates a little bit. And so, that's kind of the necessary evil of continuing water service for the communities.
How long is, uh, that life cycle? Rod, you know offhand, those water tanks, when you have to go visit every 10 years?
No, I'm sure it's much longer than 10 years, but it really depends on, you know, the wear and tear of ice buildup and things like that that take the toll on a, on a water tower, so you, when you're operating them, you always try to keep the water turning over, cut down on that ice buildup and, um, the operators do a pretty good job of...
Cause I know the big tank, we're probably a few years longer than we should be on that one.
Yeah.
And the West Evolent one, it's, it's kind of unusual to do back-to-back with two major tanks.
The West Evolent one, we pushed off as long as we could.
Yeah, well, that, the new one here, the big one, and Evolent here also froze in that horrible winter a few years back, and I mean, we had major undertaking to get that back up and running.
But... Yeah, the vent, um, froze up on top, ice dropped, created a vacuum, sucked them rough.
Yes.
Well, you know, that's, that affects firefighting, and I imagine your insurance rating also, how good that thing is and the milling and supply, but that's probably the two biggest expenses you're gonna really get with the water department.
We're just lucky we don't have to buy a new water tower, cause that would be millions.
Yeah, it's part, part of doing business. So are you okay if we approve this and if we have to make any amendments?
I am, I am, as long as I'm backed up with that in form of a motion.
All right. Do I have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
And item 14, we have the bids for chief, you wanna elaborate a little bit on that? With this, security cameras, I know we were talking about that project?
Uh, Mayor, Councilor, this is, um, kind of a follow-up from a few months ago, and we were discussing discretionary, um, um, items. Over the past several years, and I think, um, Councilor Lillis can attest that camera systems have always been a topic for the city, and over the last several years, the technology has really come forward and the price has really gone down. I've been approached by several business owners over the last several years in reference to what it would take to get some security cameras in town. Hence, um, the grant, um, through the Community Foundation here, um, that we received, uh, will go along with this project. We're looking at putting cameras for a, a tool for the city, not only law enforcement, but the, uh, city in general. There'd be two cameras on Grant Avenue and Fail, two cameras on Pier Street and Grant, two on Monroe and Grant, um, going all the way up five blocks, all the way to Jackson Street. With the, the main DVR system located at City Hall at the Police Department. This project is a, can be considered as a starter in case we want to expand on it in the future to other locations within the city. And we also do have plans at City Hall, um, that we've been updating also to get cameras around City Hall. Those cameras can also be hooked up directly into the system that we have. So, the price on this is roughly $20,422, $20 through DSC, um, in Duluth Superior Area, they've been great to work for, minus what we got, what we received from the grant. And the camera systems that we are looking at for City Hall, the price would actually be a little bit lower now because of, of this quote that we're, uh, if approved. So, um, it would be my recommendation, um, if we're gonna do it, um, this is a pretty good price, I feel.
Cause what do we budget, 18?
18, I believe.
18 and then we're only gonna...
15, and I, I had been told the merchants association might be stepping up to the plate on that one as well.
I had heard the same, uh, same thing on that, so, um, the initial one, I had a estimate from DSC, they said right around 18,000, it did come over at 20, but with that grant, um, it would be less, and, and hopefully we can get something, a little bit more to bring that price down, but on a public safety issue, um, I mean, just for a community-wide, I think this would just be a good, good tool, um, that we could use for a future for the, um, Main Street area.
Too bad, too bad we can't tie that into it to dog, cause dog gets lots of cash.
The ATM with four legs?
Yeah.
No, forgive me, Chief, but were there any thought given to, you know, the outside or outer lying areas, like say the skate park?
Absolutely, and we're looking at that, and like I said, this would just be a, a good starting focal point for this system, which we can, uh, expand on. This system that we're looking at, it had to be camera to camera, it had to be in line of sight, um, but I did speak with DSC and, you know, kind of our other, um, concerns and other areas in town, it would be nice to even get a, possibly a mobile camera, that would be a little bit easier to move around with them, and I'm still getting information on that, but I would strongly encourage that in other locations, especially if we're having problems in certain areas.
Like even down by the, uh, Fail Pond, you know, we have the bomber and everything out there and...
You could expand off this system right tim.
Correct, and, and that's why I said this is just a starting point, so we, we can only, um, go up from here.
Well, we might consider improving our camera system at the recycling area. Is there even a cap, is that a camera there?
Yeah, okay.
That's a nail to the pole. Anybody else have any questions?
That was good.
Chief on this? Chief on this? Well, since we got the grant and we're under budget, to call for a motion that we approve this project?
So am I.
Motion made by Willis, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Coivinin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Well, that takes care of business tonight. I just, I just had one thing, I was gonna make a request. I've had some concerns about some of the playgrounds, you know, maybe they need some upgrades in equipment, and I was gonna ask, like, Public Works Department and the city engineer, maybe to take a look and see what we need from landscaping prospect, and maybe some equipment has to be replaced, you know, whether the load that's useful is. Because how many parks do we have? We got...
South Side.
South Side, North Side, and wherever, we have some equipment, West Evelyn?
West Evelyn gets used a lot too out there, and that was one of my things about, I think, I don't know if I brought it up with Jackie, or with somebody, about putting a bathroom out there.
Done.
Okay, because I've had a couple ladies that were complaining about that, but I mean, they're all getting used, and I don't know, we're getting more kids in town, they're popping up everywhere.
Well, that's, that was my concern, you know, the crew doesn't have time to go out there.
Yeah.
Then we, we have Rod's guys take a look, and they know what specs, and make some recommendations, and we can make a decision of what we need.
North Side, what's the little one down there, where the curling club used to be?
The Monroe.
Monroe Street.
Yeah, I heard there's some equipment there, it was in pretty tough shape.
And there's a lot of kids that play there, I was surprised.
Getting, getting the new wave finally.
Yeah. Do you have any idea if the park commission is...
Well, we haven't, we haven't went through, we've been going through a little at a time over the years. We've given some money out of our budget to, to help the process and the change, and the last park commission meeting we have, that I was at, we did not discuss upgrades, because, well, one is, the biggest upgrade was, of course, Veterans Park. We still have phone time to help all of the South Side and at Monroe.
North Side.
So we'll get on it.
I think from a...
Along with the city side, helping us.
You know, it's nice from a liability standpoint, too, that it helps us to take a look at that stuff.
Oh, yeah, it's even, when you drive into town there, where, when they decorate it so nice on North Side, and then you come by and you see a couple barbecues going, you know, and kids playing, and it's, it's really nice to see. I mean, we have a beautiful park though, you know, so.
No question.
You know, anything we can do to help.
They need, they need to be replaced, they rest out, just like our cars do, so.
And these lovely seven, eight-month winters.
Nine.
Yeah, nine.
That's, that's about all I had to bring up there. Brian, you got anything?
I've nothing.
Joe, you've got anything?
No, people are out golfing, we haven't had a golf commission meeting yet, but what I've heard is, the golf course is doing all right, but, you know, they're working for what they have, and they're trying to get grass growing out there, and there's a lot of people going down them fairways, so that's what it's there for.
Summer came fast.
Yes, I mean, I don't think there was a spring, or, I mean, it was winter and eighty degrees, and the grass is growing, so. Everybody bear with the boys until they get it looking good out there, because I know we got a good crew, and they will. But otherwise, that's all I got.
The last snowstorm, they were cutting grass out there, and somebody told me next thing you got golf ball-sized snowflakes falling on them.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, man, was that unbelievable. Anything else, Joe?
Nope, that's about it.
Brian, you got anything for us? How, how are you holding up here?
Well, it was a Thursday, I got a quantity of some new US Steel in my shoulder joint. Had to make sure it was US-made, obviously. So I'm in kind of recovery mode, I didn't know if I was gonna be able to swing it tonight, but we made it, and good to be back.
Good, good to see you're still on this side of the grass after that.
Yeah, I kinda like that idea.
Bradley, how are you doing? I know you had a rough first the last few weeks with the problems.
I've had a rough, like Joe, last few years, been tough, I don't know what's going on.
Is that what happens when you retire? You just start disintegrating.
I do wanna say one thing about the Jeepers. I was headed to the cities the other day, week before opening week and officiating season, and I saw fifty trailers with Jeepers, Jeeps on, from Jeepers Rally they had. I did not see more than nine boats going north, and we still had a foot of snow, of course, so, and ice on the lakes. So the boats were not coming, but the Jeepers were up here. Well, then I checked with some of the people in Gilbert, and down by their, the field down by their car wash was overloaded with people camping and with their first rally of the year, and I can hardly wait till we get our road punched through to their big trail there, so they can go up and use it, and make life easier for everybody.
You really don't realize how much activity that place gets.
There must have been a hundred and fifty of them.
There is lots.
Yep. There's some pretty expensive rigs there, I'll tell you that.
Well, that's about it, other than I'm back up and running on all fours too a little bit, so.
I know, you've been having a tough, say, few weeks there, man, oh, man.
We'll keep it, keep it going, I hope.
Take care of yourself, though.
Well, thanks, Brian, Brian helps me. I see him in the ER, and he just says, "Again."
I see, it looks like the day's inside is getting pretty well leveled off.
It's looking pretty good up there.
Looks like maybe this week they might have it done. I see the old vets, vets club in, Bill's Audio, I see they got that seated and whatever in there, getting the projects finished up. I don't have anything to say. Chief, you have anything else?
Mayor, Council, just a few things. I just wanted the public to be aware, in your travels, I've been fielding a few complaints this year about the intersection of Fail Avenue and Harrison Street, which is typically a three-way stop intersection. And we have a lot of kids, especially in that neighborhood now, coming to and from school, and there's been a lot of traffic coming up the hill going westbound, going a little bit faster, and a lot of parents had some concerns for the safety of their children. So I had a conversation with Mr. Vic Lund from St. Louis County, and he concurred with me in my, he was really unaware of that, he goes, he doesn't like to have three-way stop intersections. So if you notice up in that area now, there is a four-way stop intersection. There are people going through westbound that probably aren't used to or accustomed of that intersection yet. So just please use diligence when you're up in that area, it is a four-way stop intersection, and we're gonna, you know, start patrolling that to let people know that as well. Along with that, calendar parking obviously is now done. However, there are still a lot of vehicles around town that are parked against traffic, especially on the hilly areas. I'm asking, there's no more snow on the streets, so please park the right way, otherwise you might see a ticket in the near future on your, on your windshield. It just causes chaos when people are coming and going from their houses. Also, you might notice the speed display sign on Fail Avenue, or on Fail Road is not working, hasn't been for a little while now. St. Louis County is looking at that, we don't know if something happened during the winter. They looked at the bat, our city looked at the battery, but it's not that, so they're having another issue with it. So, yeah, they'll hopefully be taking care of that. Blight is in full swing.
Oh, man.
Right before this meeting, I had a complaint of five blighted properties out in West Evelyn by a concerned citizen. Thankfully, we got one of our, our part-timers working right now, so I gave him that, and he's, he's on it right now. But we're, we're really concentrating at the time about abandoned vehicles left in the yards with expired registration. We're gonna be notifying that, as well as a lot of junk in the yards that have accumulated over, over the winter. So if you do get a notice, don't panic. You can either call us, we'll explain the, the violation to you, and we're just, you've got ten days to take care of it, so you might see one of those. Along with that, I've really experienced a lot of complaints over the last month or two. I like to see a lot of the people out with their animals, walking the dogs, especially at Fail Pond. However, we're seeing a lot of waste on the, dog waste on the trail, on the sidewalks. What we're asking for, and it's city ordinance, if you're gonna be walking your animals and they go to the bathroom, please pick it up right away. It's just, it keeps things cleaner and it's just more healthy, so we're also gonna be looking at that as well. And especially up by the ball fields where the kids are playing, they don't wanna get further messed. And Counselor Hidrava, you touched on the Jeepers, I did talk with Scott and Draw. I do have a bunch of ATV signs that we're gonna be a little bit more clearly marking our ATV row in town, so they should be going up, I'm hoping this week, soon, we'll say soon, hopefully before Memorial Day, so that is all I have.
I got one, one question, Chief. You know, since the old junior high building, there's nothing in there, do we need that four-way stop at Jones and McKinley? Because we got three four-way stops all in a row.
That's governed by the county, and I know that when that was put in, that four-way stop was put in, they agreed to come the following year and remove the one at, I think, well, now I have to think about it.
Pierce?
The one right by the library at...
McKinley and Pierce.
McKinley and Pierce. And they failed to come up and remove that sign, so maybe reminding them might be in order, because I'm with you on that, you have three stops.
Yeah, and I know we had to do it when there was activity in that school, so.
Well, I would also think that we have some businesses right there on Pierce and McKinley, the clinic, the hospital. I, I don't condone stop signs, but I think that, that spot is needed.
Well, I know that that...
Along with the library.
It is the county that makes the decision ultimately on where the stop signs go on that particular avenue, but I know that that, the intersection of Jones and McKinley was driven by citizen complaint.
Yeah.
So the county came in and reviewed it and put that one up, but at, at the same time, they had agreed to come in and remove the one on Pierce, so might be worth looking into. At least that would be one less stop in a row.
And when they did the Jones Street project, they had two speed display signs that they were gonna put up, but because of that stop sign on McKinley, I don't think traffic was getting up enough to trigger that. So, and that's one of those speed display signs they put down by Fail Pond, and they also put another one in Mountain Iron, and my understanding is the one in Mountain Iron isn't working either, so there might be a glitch with those two display signs that they're looking into.
Scott, do you have anything to add? I know you're pretty busy this time of year.
Yeah, we are. Just a note that we got a late start sweeping the streets this year, so. But the street sweeper is out every day, and we'll, we'll get it done eventually.
How are they finding dealing with that, that overcoating they put out?
It's, yeah, it's, we have to empty quite a bit more, we're sweeping up quite a bit of that, you know, and they put it down, and we grade it up, or we snowplow it up, so it's, there's a lot accumulated on the, on the curb, so.
Has that been kinda hard on the equipment?
Um, yeah, probably a little extra wear and tear on the booms, you know, but nothing, nothing too serious. But we'll, we'll get it done.
Scott, did our alley cleanup come off pretty good this year again?
Well, we got a late start on that also, we started this this past Monday, so we'll be doing that the next couple weeks.
So I, I guess the people delivering their refuse down to the garage, did we get quite a volume this year?
Uh, just about average, yeah. And that, that ended, ended this past Friday, going, and we, like you say, we're starting to go through the alleys now and pick up branches and whatnot.
Are we still, we're still in the middle of alley cleanup?
Yes, yes, yeah, that'll be ongoing for another couple weeks.
Chief visits me, so.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Chief visits me.
Knocked for coffee?
Anything else, Scott?
Hold the line like I...
Oh, that's it.
Rod, you got anything else, though?
No, nothing else.
Jackie?
I don't, thanks.
Joel?
Nothing for me.
Steph, you got any news for us? No one in the audience, other than Bill? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting.